The September 9th, 2025 Regular Planning Commissioning Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, Commissioners, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located at the back of the room, or the back of the council chambers above the clock. Will the planning clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford, Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Langel.
Here.
Commissioner DeYoung.
Here.
Commissioner Stafford.
Here.
And Commissioner Seals, it has an excused absence. Commissioner Stafford, you have a quorum with Commissioners Brown, Langel, DeYoung, and yourself in the chambers.
All right, thank you. Councilmember O'Callaghan, would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Please.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, is there any conflict of interest to declare? Hearing none. If the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda such as the minutes, they need to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under new business at this time. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Langel, as Resolution Number 2509 has been approved by this commission, the consideration of a resolution number 2510 is inappropriate. Therefore, I respectfully move that Item 8.1 under New Business Legislative Recommendations Actions Resolution Serial Number 2510 be removed from the agenda.
Chair, I can speak to that resolution.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
So, the reason why that is placed on your agenda as a new resolution is the only way that we, in essence, repeal the resolution because of the nature of that instrument is to adopt a new one. And the reason why we put another one in front of the commission is my fault. The attachment that had the proposed ordinance from the past resolution had some errors in it that were my errors. And so, we're putting it in front of you with the corrected attachment. And the reason why we need to do that, a lot of times, it wouldn't matter that much as long as, you know, it's a proposed ordinance, you're not adopting the ordinance, you're just proposing it. But I, it's, we talked about it, and council likely will really rely on that proposed ordinance from the commission. They're going to want to take that up, and then it will be introduced. So, we just wanted to make sure that the ordinance you're proposing has all of the updated code provisions. And so, what happened in part is that the code provisions in the former ordinance were from the old code, but the commission has passed the, passed Title 16, and so while the effective date is yet to come, we need to use the appropriate code provisions. So, legally speaking, and from the perspective of the parliamentarian and the attorney, it's completely appropriate to have the resolution, the new resolution, on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have to question. The only way to remove Resolution 2509 is either repeal or rescind. This, by what authority? By...
So, the way a resolution works is you adopt a resolution and you take a position over the course of the, of, you know, into the future, into perpetuity. Commission might adopt additional resolutions. So, this resolution, in essence, because it is newer in time, repeals the old resolution to the extent it contradicts it. And so, one of the things that we often do is we might put a reference on the top of the resolution, but resolutions will, they only exist in time until they are rescinded or changed by the language in another resolution. So, this is very appropriate. So, an ordinance, when it's codified, right, when we codify an ordinance, that can only be changed through an ordinance that repeals that codified ordinance. But you still, even in that case, you don't have an ordinance amending or repealing the past ordinance, right? It repeals or amends the section of the code that has been published and codified. If you have an ordinance that is a non-code ordinance, then you don't repeal or amend that ordinance, you simply pass a new non-code ordinance. And because it is newer in time, it will change the state of the law as it exists.
But then why is there a comment on the ordinance itself that repeal?
That there was a comment in the corner, the upper, uh...
Yes.
Upper right-hand corner, saying repealing or replacing, and we use both words for, it's designed to be user-friendly. And it creates a link between the two resolutions, so if anyone's going through legislative history at any point, they're not confused, because they're going to see a resolution, and then at the next meeting, they're going to see a resolution that predominantly does the same thing. And there, we don't want them to be confused, and we want them to make sure they know which one came in real time. So, we're really just redoing something based on my error, and I am sorry for that. But it, what will happen is that resolution, once adopted, if adopted, it will go up to the council, and they will decide whether or not they want to take the proposed ordinance and adopt it, or change it, or sponsor it.
Okay, and then final question. So, you're saying this commission has the authority to repeal or rescind?
You have the authority. When it comes to resolutions, you have the authority to pass all of the resolutions on topics that you have authority on. So, yes, absolutely, this is within, not only is this within your authority, but this particular consideration, the consideration of the overlay district was a directive from council. They wanted you to consider it, and on the record, they made reference to an ordinance. And that is why we took this unique approach. The commission doesn't usually draft ordinances that they propose or recommend to council. Usually, you adopt resolutions recommending, you know, recommending specific actions, but it's, I mean, I've seen it done before. I think with landscaping, that was another ordinance that came through the commission in its full form. So, it's not unheard of, but it is unusual.
Okay, I mean, I'll take your, you're the attorney, so I'll take your word for it.
Madam Attorney, just for my clarification, so could we say it this way, that with 25-9, we painted the walls green, we decided we don't like that, with 2510, we're going to repaint red? Would that be a fair analogy?
Yes, that would be one thing that you could do here. It's more, your attorney made a mistake with the attachment that I provided, and because the attachment is so important to the resolution, I unfortunately put the commission in a position to have to revisit it. And again, I am sorry for that, because not only did I do that, but now I've created this conversation as well, so I'm heaping the insults to him.
I think the conversation on the process, though, is beneficial. It helps me in my understanding of things. So, Commissioner Langel, did you still have the changes you wanted to make, or that you were proposing originally?
If there is no second, the motion dies.
That is true. All right, was there a second? Hearing none, motion fails for lack of a second. Is there any other changes that would... Oh, I'm sorry, I actually mixed up the order here, or maybe I didn't. Is, before we make any changes, is there any conflicts of interest to declare?
No.
Okay. And then, is there any other changes the commission would like to discuss under the consent agenda such as the minutes? They need to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under new business at this time. Is there any changes to the agenda? Hearing no changes to the agenda, the agenda will stand as presented, and a less than objection is raised. So, next on the agenda are the reports. Do we have a report from our acting city planner?
Thank you, Chair. I was going to just give a quick little report, and then I thought, well, we have time for some pictures. Everybody likes some photos, right? We were going to have one of the professors from UAF that is a specialist in invasive species be here tonight, but he is finishing fieldwork, and so he'll be joining us next month. So, his next best thing is economics. So, in Wasilla, we say it's a great place. I know the borough says live, work, and play. We say live, work, and invest, because that's where, you know, that's what drives our economy. So, wanted to show the relationship between planning and economic development, we're kind of siblings. You know, we can't have an economy without development, and you can't develop without some kind of economics. And so, just give you an update on where we are as a city right now. So, a couple of things, we got some strategic initiatives that we're working on. We are incorporating how we measure, what we treasure, and then what are some of the disruptors you're going to see coming this next year that will cause business to kind of hiccup every now and then? So, we always go back to our sets, because that's really our five-year plan. Are we building a strong business hub? Are we producing good quality jobs? And are we having that balance where we also are a great place to explore the outdoors and raise a family? And so, our strategic initiatives between now and 2028 is to upgrade our infrastructure and improve it and expand it. It's a necessity. Hotels like to have flushing toilets, and stores like to have water, and all the amenities that go with it, including good roads that don't have potholes. So, it's our first goal. The second is to diversify our local economy, so we're not reliant on just one industry. And the third is the community connection. And I think a good demonstration of that goal is the conversation around our library right now, and the potential of expanding some of the area for a new piece of technology that's going to go in there that may allow us to have our extended hours at the library, because it is a connector. People come to Wasilla for the library, then they go to Target. And so, we are identifying, measure what you treasure. We live on sales tax, two and a half percent, so we want to know, you know, who are those collectors and where are they located? We also work very close with licensing to ensure that when they come into planning, that they also have a license, and then they have the right permit. We're also tracking jobs, so if a new restaurant is built, we look at how many construction jobs, how many part-time jobs, how many full-time jobs. And we have those conversations with the owners after they have their permit and they start the development. And so, right now, we're able to tell the Economic Development Administration, this is how many full-time jobs in the next five years that we think are going to come here that are very good jobs. And so, right now, we have about 2,900 business licenses, and those are your mom-and-pops, as well as your events that go on at the Menard Center, or activities that are going around. But that, that ebb and flows at 2,900. And then we have 3,300 remote sales. Those are the Amazon packages that are coming in, and the online buying, and that's actually increased over like 200 licenses in the last, the last six months. So, it's, it's, there's a huge market there. And so, we also look at our permits. So, so far this year, we've issued 228 permits for whether somebody's renting a new place or they're less than 10,000 square feet, 228. We've issued some use permits for homes that are in a commercial district or a multifamily, something that requires public notification. We've had four conditional use permits and two rezones. So, some of the activity, construction that you'll see around the city is the large hotel. Obviously, it's 107 rooms with the pool. It's about 220 construction jobs, about 50 full-time jobs. Mixed-use facility, that's the My House facility that's going in down Fish Hook, that's 44,000 square feet. And again, a lot of construction jobs and some good professional jobs that are going to be there. We've got the clinic expansion that's going on up in Gus Bay, 150,000 square feet with about 200 construction jobs, 125 medical jobs. One of the concerns they have is the housing, when you have that many people traveling, either traveling professionals or people that want to live here. We have a large retail chain that is about 105,000 square feet. That's, that's, you know, 12, it doesn't have a lot of construction, but there are some, you know, 11 full-time jobs that will come. We have another large retailer that reached out, and, you know, their concern is they want at least five acres, they want public utilities, and they have to have a certain distance between them and their competitor. And that, and that is a very big bill to fill right now, a five-acre parcel. Retail expansion, 15,000 square feet, that's Lowe's. They want it to expand an area for all of their supplies, so they don't have to store them in the parking lot. So, you know, good construction jobs, not a whole lot of full-time jobs. The retail expansion is Basil Ginger's, about 12,000. That was one of our first mixed-use permits, because you've got some housing upstairs, and so good construction jobs. It's also one of the new developments with a heated parking lot and some pretty high-end design. And then, we just kind of broke out the commercial tenants. Those are, I'm going to lease a space for a year, got 10 duplexes, 25 single-family homes, two subdivisions. So, you know, over the course of the year, we'll start doing some graphs to look back in 2023 and where we are today. But if you can't, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it, so. And this is really what's impacting business. People would say, well, why is all this growth happening in Wasilla? And when is this rewrite of Title 16? We've made it really accommodating. We've also tried to figure out where can we meet them in the cost right now, the cost of supplies, the, some of the policies around having to buy the build-back, what is it? The, you have to buy America, and, and so there, you know, there's some really strict deadlines there, they have to have it, so they got to get construction going. And labor, finding labor is still, is one of the biggest challenges, they're telling us, is we just have to have a workforce. We still do not have a property tax that we put in addition to the borough. Our restaurant eating, alcohol, beer permits, that has been a really good benefit for cities that are, you know, restaurants that are open that can go to Amco and get a license pretty quickly. And that's been a, we still have about 15 of them left. We had those in advance. And then, our liquor license transfers, there used to be a policy that there could be two transferred into the city every 10 years. We got that raised to three. And of course, then the borough says, well, yeah, we'd like to also have it so they could come back to the borough if they want. So, liquor license, I think there's been 25 that we reissued so far this year, so that, that's a good profit for a company. These are some of the expanded upgrades for water and wastewater you guys are going to see, a new million-gallon water tower, interconnect, which is the Palmer Wasilla Interconnect pump station upgrades, so we can ensure that we can pass all of the fire hydrant requirements, spruce tower upgrades, that's all, right now, it's all managed by SCADA, so we have immediate, we can see exactly if there's a pump that's not working, or, or, you know, real-time data. And of course, the 5.9 million dollar appropriation we got for sewer upgrades, that's our sludge. We're looking at technology right now about how we can manage that sludge and compost, or have some alternative disposal for that. And then, while all this is going on, we have an entire mapping agreement with the borough, so we can use some of their ARC GIS and some of their tools to make sure that we're mapping all of the infrastructure that we're putting in. We're also expanding the airport, as you probably are aware, Taxiway K was one of the biggest procurements that the city had put out, and had 11 really good bidders that came to the, came to the show. About a seven, seven or eight million dollar project, and then the city council actually, there was a match there required by FAA that they legislatively approved. And we're about 80% done with the second phase of our master plan, which is all your NEPA and all your future satisfactions FAA would like. So, we'll be at 90% in October, and they'll be coming forward with a nice presentation. The city council will ask them to come to you guys as well about the master plan, what that looks like. We also have the runway expansion project, so you're hearing, on that particular project, there's land acquisitions going on, our environmental assessment is happening, those are all your wetland delineations, and all your NEPA, and your CHEPO, which is your archaeological validation, and then we're also doing a fence repair out there. So, the goal is to have a very well-established regional airport in this, in this area. One of our new tenants, about a year ago, the business has done so well, they'll be expanding and bringing some global customers to our airport. But there are some impacts on business, I call them disruptors. You know, the MPO is the municipal planning organization. It's not so much a disruptor, but we all have to learn how to prioritize our projects and get them into the MPO, so we can get those sidewalks and some of the ancillary infrastructure paid for, and that's Palmer Wasilla. The borough and the tribes and DOT have to collaborate a lot more than they have in the past. The downtown Cupola project, it's been on the books for a long time. The borough and the cities have been in a lot of conversation with the state legislatures and the governor about this. As you know, there was a pretty fat veto pin that happened, and there's some match dollars there, so we've been having that at the front, the front of the train, making sure that those match dollars in that project gets into the RFP stage in the spring of '26. So, right now, they're just doing the last phases of engineering and some utility work on that. There is limited commercial property, that's what we hear, these five-acre parcels, very hard to build on these very small pieces of property. Traffic is, is an issue, but we've been working with DOT on, on some immediate mitigation things that we can have them do, and they're actually funded in the step that was approved. Of course, I talked about the septic system upgrades and the expansion of our water lines and the airport and tariffs. I mean, that is a concern that people have, that, you know, how is that going to impact them? And then, we have our comp plan that's happening right now. So, those are just some things that are going to impact business, hopefully positive, but maybe negative. All things regional, I say, we're having our economic summit on October 15th. That is the fourth one we've had. We have them in the spring, we have them in the fall. We try to take people out to the different areas of what we call our economic anchors. This time is on resource development. Some of your mining companies, oil and gas companies, resource development, trade companies are going to be out here speaking. Talked about the GIS mapping services. We have an agreement with the borough, so we don't have to go out and pay for the license for all the tools that it takes for us to do good mapping. That's an agreement we have with them. Addressing is another thing, it's very regional. Borough does it one way, we do it another way. We're trying to figure out how we can, you know, have a regional platform to do addressing. And then, problem solver, if you go to Target and you have a pothole, you can go to the borough's potholder, put that request in, and it will go to us, or it will go to the borough, because some of these roads and these access points, you don't know who owns that section of road. But we've integrated that with them, so we can get notified. And then, just an update on our zoning maps, we will have to modify those with Title 16, because in the back of the zoning maps are the permit requirements. We got rid of use permit, so that's just one example. We'll have to work with our mapping contractor to correct that. And if you just look at the, we're probably one of the few cities that has this map that doesn't have a separate zip code. So, it's very hard when people say, well, I think I'm in the city, but I'm not sure. We also have a lot of light brown, which is your rural residential versus commercial. And I think what will come out of the comp plan is maybe a little bit more commercial in some of these areas that are operating with commercial activity right now, but they're still in RR. The other thing is rezones. We've had four rezones that each time we do a rezone, we have to print another map and have the mayor sign it, have the clerk sign it, and so there's a process there that we are working with. All of our files and planning have been digitized. They're all in a cyber cabinet, which has been a really big accomplishment. And now, we're going to parse out all the permits and the surveys, ASBIL surveys, and those will attach to those permits, or those, those tax ID numbers. So, if you have a piece of property that you're thinking about selling or listing, you can call and say, is there already a permit associated with this property? And we won't have to go look through a bunch of cabinets, so. That was one of our big projects, we wanted to have ready to go for when the planner comes on board. At the end of the day, whether we're talking about planning or economics, it's about clarity, collaboration, and communication. If we're not out there with a very clear message, talking with the market and communicating, it doesn't matter, really, they're going to ghost us. That's a really good practice I've learned. It's just, if they don't give you the right answer, they ghost you. So, we've been writing blogs in the local papers. In September, we're doing the impacts of Title 16. October, we're doing a community event called Follow the Yellow Brick Road, where we're going to have the city all dressed up as the Oz, the land of Oz, and they can come around and trick-or-treat from 2:00 to 5:00 and meet all the departments, and I don't know what our characters are going to be yet, but... And then, in November, we're going to do an article, "Mobile Food Vendors, Short-Term Rentals, Home Occupation, and Landscape Requirements" going forward. Those are three areas of impact that we've got to get very clear how that process works. The mobile food vendors, short-term rentals, and home occupations are going to be more of a licensing component, like when you get your fishing license, you want to get a tag to fish for kings, then you'd go to planning and just get an endorsement that you can do that. So, it's going to make it pretty easy for them to come into the city. And then, most of all, we just want to thank you all for putting your time in here and helping us push some of these bigger pieces of legislation like 16 and rezones down the field. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a report from our city attorney?
No report. If there's any questions, I can answer those, but otherwise, no comment.
The next item on the agenda is public participation. We are now at persons to be heard at time for members of the public to share their views with the planning commission. This is not a question-and-answer period or a time for a dialogue. Speakers may be referred to the administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the commissioner, commission, or the administration. Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. Welcome, Mr. Graham. Just please write your contact information, your name and contact information on the signup sheet, and state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. My name is Stu Graham. I'm a resident of the city of Wasilla. I'm also a member of the Wasilla City Council. However, I'm here as a resident, not as a council member. So, number one, thank you all for your service, and continuing to stick it out here and ask the tough questions and make some tough decisions. One of the things before you tonight is essentially dissolution of the downtown overlay district. This is something that I have talked about for quite a while, as we went through, you know, the year and a half revision of Title 16. You know, the downtown overlay district was established with very good intentions, you know, to, to kind of revitalize downtown, to make it more walkable, to bring more people into the downtown area, but it has failed to do that. As a matter of fact, it's actually had kind of a negative impact on, on the downtown area we have here in Wasilla. So, as Wasilla, you know, doesn't grow in its footprint, you know, not acquiring any more property, not annexing... more property, not annexing anything, the downtown properties really need to be properly used and the downtown overlay district kind of prevents the market from determining what is the best use of the downtown properties within that district there. So I'm here to support or to encourage you to support repealing or asking the commission or the council to repeal that part of Title 16, the downtown overlay district. I think it's a hugely important thing that the commission can do and will have certainly a lasting positive effect on the downtown Wassila, which is what we all want. And so that's the extent of my testimony. A quick comment for our acting city planner here, your slide says the Yellow Brink Road, so hopefully we're not getting to the brink of something here. And also, you mentioned a home occupation. You might want to change that. That really has a negative connotation. A home occupation is actually listed as a felony in the state of Alaska, so you may want to change that. But I'll write this stuff down. Thank you, folks, for your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? With no one else wishing to speak, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Would the planning clerk please read the items for approval under the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. Under the consent agenda, we have the regular meeting minutes for July 22nd, 2025 amended and the regular meeting minutes for August 26th, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Commissioner Brown.
Trying to roll things along here.
Second.
There you go, first second.
All right. The motion was made by Commissioner Langill and seconded by Commissioner Brown to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion? Is there any objections to the motions? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is new business. Will the planning clerk please read the agenda item under new business?
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. First item under new business is 8.1 Legislative Recommendations/Actions. And the first item is Resolution Serial Number 25-10, proposing and recommending an ordinance repealing the downtown overlay district to the Wassila City Council.
Thank you. Will the acting city planner please provide a report?
Thank you, Commissioner. As our awesome legal partner explained, this is kind of a cleanup from the last meeting that we had because of the attachment. And so we wanted to make sure that we had everything corrected going forward.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-10?
I move for approval of Resolution Number 25-10.
Second.
Okay, second. So it's been moved by Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner DeYoung to approve Resolution 25-10. Is there any further discussion among the members?
Mr. Chairman, just a point for the record. I'm still rather uncomfortable with this resolution, but with the input from the attorney, I will support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Langill. Any other discussion? With no further discussion, would the planning clerk please call a roll call vote to approve Resolution Serial 25-10, proposing and recommending an ordinance repealing the downtown overlay district to the Wassila City Council?
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
By a unanimous vote, the Resolution Serial Number 25-10, proposing and recommending an ordinance repealing the downtown overlay district to Wassila City Council is approved.
Thank you. Next item under new business is item 8.2. Would the planning clerk please read the item under new business into the record?
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. The next item under new business is Resolution Number 25-11, approving updated planning commission agenda format.
Will the acting city planner please provide a report?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to refer this to our legal for an opinion on this. Yeah, so the planning clerk and I worked together to try to create an agenda that may, would make the most sense to the public. One of the things that was difficult about the agenda format that the commission was using is it looked more like, say, a council agenda, which means you're dealing primarily with legislative matters. And when publics see reference to hearings, they're, it's confusing if you have two types of hearings. If you have a hearing for, I mean, we have quasi judicial hearings in front of the commission and that's really pretty much all we have and otherwise, we have public comment. And so we would just remove some of that language, just tried to use common sense, clear language, and then add some flags for things like quasi judicial hearings and separating that from legislative recommendations and actions in anticipation of the commission wanting to do some of those legislative duties that were included on the list of what falls to the commission, making sure that we have a blueprint on the agenda for you to do both. Do you have anything? Am I forgetting anything?
You could, did you touch on when it's appropriate for persons of the public to make comments on permits going before public hearing?
Excellent point. Okay, so one of the other things we did is there are opportunities to, to be precise, on your agenda for the public to comment, but we were allowing the public to comment as to the specific quasi judicial hearings under Title 16 as it's now drafted. A public hearing, meaning a quasi judicial hearing, happens in public, but the public doesn't get to comment on those hearings as part of that record that you're creating in those hearings. Think of it this way, if there is a trial in court for, say, I don't know, murder or something, people can come and watch the trial, but they don't have a right to interject in the trial and say, well, I really think this person's guilty or I think they're innocent. Now, land use is not murder, right? We are dealing with very different things, but that, creating that, those due process protections for the applicant as well as any interested parties and making sure that we're not subjecting them to the comments of the public that then becomes part of the record is important. So that is the other piece. We preserved public comment because that's very important to the commission and in the city, of course, and, but we did, we removed it from the quasi judicial hearings.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-11? All right.
Well, I would, but you took my mic away from me.
Is that a little battery?
No.
There you go.
I moved that for the approval of Resolution 25-11.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion dies for the lack of a second, I believe.
Yep.
All right. So we are now at unfinished business. With no items under unfinished business, we move to communications. We are now at communications. Would the planning clerk please read the item for approval under the communications into the record?
Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. First item under communications is permit information. We have permits and licenses issued August 20th of 2025 through September 2nd of 2025. 10.2 Enforcement Log, Code Violations, August 20th, 2025 through September 2nd, 2025. And lastly, the Matsui Borough Planning Commission Agenda is for September of 2025.
All right, thank you. We now move on to audience comments. We are now at audience comments, a time for members of the public to share their views with the commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to the administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the commission or the administration. Is there anyone who would wish to present, or sorry, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission? Mr. Graham?
I'm going to get my steps in. Thank you, Commissioner Stafford. Once again, my name is Stu Graham. I am a resident of the city. I'm also an elected member of the city council, but I do not represent the council. I represent myself before you today. I just wanted to make a suggestion that on the permits list that we have here, that we list the name of the applicant of the permit as opposed to just the, as opposed to just the fact that an address is there. So just a suggestion, it's worth exactly what you paid for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. If no one further from the audience wished to address us, we will go ahead and move on to comments. Does the acting city planner have any comments?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a few things. One is per code, we have to have one commission meeting per month. We have two scheduled, but in review of the second half of September, I don't know if everybody's hunting or what, but we don't have any permits in the queue right now for the commission to review. And so, including our invasive species guest speaker, they can come in, they can come in October. And so the mayor has allowed us to cancel that second meeting this month if that's okay with the commission. And the second thing is we had a very good interview with a season planner who is moving forward in that process and it looks like they will be able to start the first of November. Oh, boy.
For canceling the second meeting for this month, do we need to do like an official process or just comments? I know I'm out of town, was going to try and join telephonically, but wasn't sure for that.
Well, now you don't have to.
Yeah.
I'm glad Holly's here because per code, the mayor is allowed to make that decision, but is it best to have the commission also?
Commissioner Brown, in the past, we had to write a memo to the mayor and she signed it. I know this required, but that's what happened in the past.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're doing things right. So you have to mayor can call the shots, then that's why she got voted in. Cool. Thank you. Does the city attorney have any comments?
Only one. I just wanted to officially introduce my colleague, Irina Filenpikko, who you will see, be seen more of over the, in the next, over the next year and beyond, hopefully. So we will be trying to divvy up these meetings in part because when I am doing the commission meeting and the council meeting, sometimes you don't necessarily get me at my best. I'm a little bit, a little bit tired at the end. Irina has been working on municipal law projects for over a year now and she is phenomenal and we are very lucky to have her. So I look forward to your opportunity to get to know her as well.
Question. City attorney, I thought during short meetings, we was going to have a mini class.
Next time, I promise, I promise. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner Brown, do you have any comments?
Yes. With the presentation that the city acting planner gave, I'd like for the commission to agree to ask the city public works director to come forth because as I see, all the buildings that being built and the permits being issued, you addressed the infrastructure, but I'm concerned because every store, every hotel is just not a building, but there's thousands of gallons of water and sewer being produced from that. And every new business that opened, every customer that comes through the door, whether it's a restaurant, other things, there's a lot of sewer being produced from that. And so I'd like to know about, from him, where we are with our infrastructure and I'd like to know the plan for sustainment operations on all the infrastructure.
If that's a motion, I'll second.
It's a motion.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Langill. Any further discussion by the commission? Do we need to have like a formal proposal written up or can we just, can it be done off the minutes notes?
What we've done in the past is just put it under reports. It'd be a public works report.
Okay.
Commission.
Okay.
I'll schedule that in October.
Okay. Do we still need to vote on it? Then it's been moved and seconded. We should probably act on it? All right. Madam, I just forgot your title. Would you please take a roll call vote?
Planning clerk, through acting chair Stafford or Commissioner Stafford, I will happily do the vote. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
Commissioner DeYoung?
Yes.
Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
Okay. By unanimous vote, the motion to have the public works director do a presentation on those items that Simon requested at the, in an October planning commission meeting is approved.
All right. Does that conclude your comments, Commissioner Brown?
I'd add one question for the city attorney.
Okay.
If I can find here. One of the ordinance that didn't pass, number 25-11, didn't pass, thank you, but I sit down here on the judicial hearings that if there's a proposal before the city planning commission and it affects a person in that zone, if they didn't submit a written comment prior to the meeting, they cannot justify not even though it affects them?
Correct, and that's in the law that passed. And that's, what that means is if you want to actually be a party to a proceeding, you have to participate in that proceeding. And then you can appeal and you can go forward and be a participant, but you can't sort of jump in midstream or later.
Thank you.
But that is not, that resolution just shares that information.
Yeah, yeah, separate from the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Langill, do you have any comments?
Yes, thanks to the acting planner for your report. It's very interesting. I do have a question as far as the minutes that were approved for August 26th. The previous meeting, it's another one of those things that went around and around. We never approved it. We amended those minutes. It was submitted to the council, signed by the chair. And so now that we've amended it, will the new amended minutes be submitted to the council?
I can, I don't. I think, did you, did you move, well, check the record, but if you move to amend them, then that, you know, then that is, you want them to come back to then approve them aside from the, because I think that's sort of what you were doing. You've got the minutes, you said, this is what we are going to change in the minutes. I would not normally suggest those come back to again be, because otherwise, why wouldn't they have just been amended? Because you specified the amendment, but we can bring them back.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. It's, we never approved the minutes the first time they came before us.
It was tabled until the amendment was written in there.
But they were signed as, by the chairman and submitted to the council. So my question is, now that we have amended and amended- So my question is, now that we have amended and approved those minutes, will that go to the council?
It can.
Well, I think it needs to.
Planning clerk through the chair? Yes.
Okay, thank you. And just a quick question for the acting planner. The full-time planner, November 1st?
Yeah, so we are in what I guess you'd call the negotiating phase, but that would work very well with their timeline, the first of November. Yeah, because they'll be relocating back home.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner DeYoung, do you have any comments?
I was just going to comment on 8.2. I, I don't, I, we don't have a lot of participation as it is, so if somebody came with somebody or somebody had something to say and they didn't get it in writing in time, I don't know why they couldn't talk. I, I don't agree with that at all. They should be able to speak. And so that's why I was quiet and didn't second it, because I don't believe that. And that was it.
Chair, acting chair. I do just want to be, and I just, because I want you to fully understand, and we don't, you guys don't get too angry at me when we're in the hearing. The law is that they cannot participate in a hearing.
We just said.
This is just telling them, so when you have to tell them, I'm sorry, this is a public yet closed hearing, they aren't surprised, right? Because they, but what we can say is you can participate at this time, but right now the agenda makes it look like they have a right to participate in those hearings, but they don't. And when we allow participation in those hearings by the public, then we muddy the waters regarding the record and create that vulnerability. So I just want you to be, so we're not fixing it by not approving the agenda, although I fully respect your decision not to change the agenda. I'm just, I want to make sure that's still.
I just want on record that that's crap. I mean, we're supposed to be a democracy and we're not. I mean.
Will that be part of the legal publication, that people must put their comments in writing in order to participate in a public hearing?
Yes, it's in the code. And remember, they can come and talk, they can talk about it in the beginning, but when you open that, when you kind of hit the gavel and you're sitting as a judge and somebody's coming to you with a property right that they've invested in, what you're saying is you need to participate in that. You can't just come in and be from another town or, right? You can be from anywhere.
That wouldn't even make sense. You have to be within 1,200 feet.
No, 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 no. Someone within 1,200 feet is getting noticed, though, and so they can participate in anybody.
Or they might be out of town, or, you know, or just.
But there are people that, but there are, and they can submit written comments. But there are people who don't live in Wasilla who might have a lot to say about a project or permit in Wasilla.
Like the lower 48 that has a lot to say about the Iditarod. Go out, get.
Yes, but based on what you guys are saying, they can come here and be part of the record in that hearing. So that's the debate. That's the great debate.
Any further comments? All right. I want to thank council member Graham and councilwoman. Again, I'm having issues. Sorry, it's been a long day. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your participation. We, as the planning commission, realize we work hand in hand with you guys, and so we appreciate that. And I always watch your meetings on YouTube. I can't be here live, but I always enjoy watching them. And thank you to the city staff for all that you do and our city attorney and for being here. And, yeah, thank you. So with no further business at hand, I'm adjourning the meeting unless an objective is raised. And my note say to wait, wait some more, wait a little longer to give Commissioner Brown time to object. Hearing no objection, the meeting is adjourned at 6:50.